All right, so we're gonna bring, when you're ready Cory.
But you know.
And when Julie's ready.
Okay, I am ready whenever you are.
I'm gonna wrap the gavel. Commissioner.
I could just start.
Suggestions?
Gavel.
Okay.
All right, we'll rise for the open the meeting with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Public comments, anyone? No?
If not, I will look for approval for the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two board meeting agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Shifel Bine, second by Johnson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go over, we'll be looking, do you wanna go over the consent agenda?
Yes.
Something here today.
So on the consent agenda today, we have approval of the July fifth board meeting minutes, approval of the social services county and hospital accounts payable, approval of transfers from the general fund to the parks and public health funds, approval of three-two licenses for Forest City Threshers and Watkins Sportsman Club events, approval of the two thousand twenty-two payment markings contract, approval of promotion of Ed Hoekstra to public works superintendent, level C forty-four, step five, thirty-five, thirty-six an hour, effective August first. And that is it.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifel Bine, questions, discussion? No? Welcome Steve. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Where are we at here? I didn't get a copy of the agenda. Hospital. Hi guys.
Good morning. Few things can bring up, you guys drove by, we did get parking lots resealed and striped. That was probably something that's been needed for a few years. So we are in the process of starting to get capital, look at our core capital budget going forward and also our budget. And continue to look at staffing, we did get our HARAM, which is a hospital market study for salaries. And we are putting that together, look at what that, the impact would be for the staff. Couple things that we identified there is the survey probably hasn't recognized, you know, it's usually a year behind with the, with the information, but it hasn't really recognized what we're seeing in reality in a couple areas, so we're trying to figure out how we got, you know, be able to tweak that a little bit. But we, we believe there to be a significant investment again this year, like we did last year.
And what did we do last year?
All-in, included a fair if I can relate to one point eight million. Before that, we were probably right around a hundred fifty thousand that we would put in in place, so we did one point eight million. I would, I would guess, looking at it, we'll be close to, we'll be close to a million dollars again this year. And again, just to remind you, no insurance companies, they called me yet to say they wanna give us more money or cost. In fact, we.
I know how that works.
We end up having one insurance company wanted us take a fifteen percent decrease in reimbursement for, you know, that would be about a million dollars impact. We said no.
And actually, from what I'm reading, the insurance companies are doing very well.
They are.
So.
So, and then I'll go over the financials.
Yeah, just quickly, we wrapped up our audit and cost report here in June, and we've had, we made a few adjustments to the financials that you have presented through May. But year to date for June, we're seeing a net income of one point seven million. June has been a little bit slower of a monitoring from the patient side, but that's pretty typical, so we're just starting to work on capital.
Questions on the financials? No? How's the COVID numbers?
Numbers gone up, we've had some inpatients over the last two or three weeks, so we've seen our numbers go up.
Are you doing any testing? We're not using the testing garage.
We're not using testing garage at this time, we're doing it all through our clinics. You know, if it ramps up towards getting over thirty, forty a day, then we'll go back to the garage. But what we're seeing is a lot of people are self-testing now. So, but I think last time, we'll have incident command today, we put that once a month, and we'll see what the numbers are today.
And those home tests aren't always reported, I'm guessing.
None of them are. Yeah, it's.
It's not like they're gonna call up and self-report.
I had a question on the, we, we had received your, the minutes. And on the back page, it said net operating profit margin. And January was thirty-four percent and February was one percent. And January, February, March, April, May, the net operating profit margins, there was a lot of fluctuation. What causes?
So a lot of it is impacted based on that contractual adjustment line. What's going on in that line and if you actually have your reimbursement, so any of our payers, what we see from the contractual side, but we also then have a reserve for bad debt, and then we also have a section for recoveries. Within January, February, we did see higher collections, so the contractual rate was lower. And we saw those collections because we were working with Minnesota State Program to, a revenue recapture program, so we were seeing higher recoveries. As we've gone throughout the year, we really try to save that reserve to say what is consistent. However, you are still going to see that up and down monthly on that operating line because of the contractual. So that contractual line is kind of a bucket of a number of things.
Okay, 'cause I thought on January.
Yep.
You get higher Medicaid, Medicaid self-pay, you're to have a higher contractual. You know, your address has a formula that basically said the likelihood of collecting is probably low.
Slim to none.
Then, then you write it off, so then they consider uncollectible. So everything that you see after that is what can we collect, what can we not collect.
Sure, that, that just happened to be in our, oh, thirty-four percent, one, one percent, I thought I'd asked.
Yeah, it definitely fluctuates significantly, and we do, we do have a number of calculations to try to smooth out that reserve.
And just underneath that, I, I don't understand, what is a patient day? Patient days, average patient days, last year patient days?
So it's trying to calculate how many beds per day are filled, really, at hospitals, so.
Inpatient.
You know, if, if my stay wasn't so many days long, seven days long, it's calculating that as a patient day within the month.
Okay.
So it's trying to capture not just having five patients, because those, each, each patient could have a long, one, one could have a one-day stay, and one could have a five-day stay.
So this is.
It's calculating how many total days within that month.
Okay, that's, all right, I wonder.
So Beth had asked about the COVID numbers, how's the monkeypox numbers?
But those are still low right now.
All right.
They're in New York, I hear though. Any other questions for Kurt or Nicole?
No.
Thank you guys. Have a good day. Joel Ramtham, Facilities Manager.
I'm here this morning to request a, we have to do a replacement of a, the HVAC. It's our, our computer operation, you know, to view our controls on our system at the highway department. We're here today to just, we have to upgrade it because of, we had that ESC failure on that particular unit. We are going through and looking at a plus insurance claim on it, but at this point, I don't know what that's gonna turn out to be, but we're just requesting to purchase, to, to do that upgrade.
So this was dated six-twenty-three, they're gonna, this proposal is good for a while?
Yes.
So we're not gonna approve it today and then have?
No.
And say we won't accept it?
They should be, or should be good to.
So is this something that, when you say insurance claim, what would you base it on?
Because there was a, there was a storm at that point in time, we had a power outage at one point that, within the timeline of what we found this failure, so we're, we're hoping that it's gonna be something related.
So someone's looking at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been filed with MCT.
Yeah.
And twenty-five percent of this is covered by the state of Minnesota?
Yes.
The highway.
Yeah.
Lot of money that was never planned on then.
No. And the, the, the system that we had in there is an older system, and that's kinda why the numbers are what they are, is because the system that we currently have is that they don't make that, that basically that controllers anymore, so now we have to upgrade to a newer controller, which has the ability, the capacity, because that's what will happen, is the other portion of this is not, we're not replacing, we're only replacing what has failed. There's potential that the whole replacement, to do the whole upgrade, is, that was a hundred and four thousand, and at this point, we didn't wanna, I don't think we're gonna go that route.
I wonder then if it, is it wise not to do it all at once, or do we have a guarantee on how long this is, because we're gonna spend forty-eight thousand dollars now?
Or would that money not overlap? I mean, this would, is this independent enough that?
Right now, this, this what we're buying right now is basically a new front end, which then will be able to integrate the new, the other stuff.
So you'll keep that part of you.
So basically, this part was, this won't go away. This'll just basically be getting us into the new system, and then we'll still have, some of it'll be on the old system yet, but with the idea that we eventually will be migrating it over. But this'll get us out of the, to this period of getting us back into this operation.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the forty-eight thousand is the hundred percent of price, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-five comes off it, just so.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I got, I'd make a, move to approve the quote from Climate Makers for the forty-eight, one eighty-eight, for the HVAC control system replacement at public works facility.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, second by Commissioner Bradison, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Or Sharon, sorry.
Good morning, Sharon Early County Treasurer. Today I'm here to seek approval for a purchase agreement with Information Systems for an accounts payable workflow, which is considered an electronic document management system. The purchase agreement would include software implementation that would be used by all county departments for processing accounts payables. This agreement consists of software products and the professional services to train to help the departments get up to speed on those things, and then the annual maintenance is included in the first amount. Maker County would, would have the capability then to convert and receive invoices in electronic format that would allow us to route the invoices to all departments. The current process that we do is in a paper format where we get the bill either by email or in the mail, and then the department receives it, they fill out a claim form, they attach that invoice to that claim form, forward it on, to their department head for signature, they return it back to them, they bring it up to the treasurer's or to our office, and then we take that invoice and input it into our financial system. And then after that is paid, we run those warrants, you approve them, we run the checks and send them out, and then after that, we archive those invoices, and then we scan those manually now into a system, and then put the check number, vendor number, that kinda stuff, so that they're in a retrievable format. So that's what we're currently doing. If we implement the system, we would be doing, the invoice would come in either way, they still, they'll have the option of sending it electronically, or it can be a paper format, but then at this onsite, that if it's paper, we would scan it into the system, and then it's in electronic format from there out. And then we would key in the information or whichever department had it, and then they would route it electronically to their department head. They get an email stating you have invoices to approve, they look at them, they put electronic signature on it. If that's completed, then it gets sent to the treasurer's office in an electronic format, and from that, we could take it and move it into a batch that creates the checks, and that automatically will, after we proof it and verify it, will get uploaded into the IFS system, so there's no double entry there. And then, once they're approved at the end, instead of scanning like those invoices being there in that format, we can just upload them into the retention file within the program for accessibility. So the advantages to the software is that data entry is only done once, it notifies the departments when they have something to sign, everything is routed electronically, real-time access, and then there's status on each invoice, so if you're, if you're wondering, well, where is that payment at, did it go through yet, or is it waiting to be? They can look that payment back up, and it will say that it's waiting for approval, or it's in the, they, because each time somebody touches it, it gets a timestamp, and so then you know where, where that document's at. So, once the purchase agreement is approved, we would get the project started in about a thirty to sixty-day window, because once we sign the contract, then we get put on their schedule. And there is, in the packet I sent, an option for an intelligent capture software, which does a, is another pack that you can add on that does a lot of that stuff automatically, like you would set up a vendor, like you're reoccurring vendors, and then it would scan the invoice, and then the first time through, it takes a little setup on the, on the onsite, but it picks where the date is, where their invoice number is, what the dollar amount is, and that odd pulls all that information over, so there isn't as much key. They said that the, the counties that have used that are the ones where their, all their billing is done centrally, so, so it wouldn't be each of the departments, all the bills would come to finance, we would determine which bills they are by scanning that, and then we would shoot them off that way, so there is an option for that. But we're, so I, but I'm not, I just wanna make you aware of it, so if we choose, choose to change something further down the line where we want everything to come in so that one department has it, and then it's saving staff time of them keying in everything and routing it back out, there is that option to do that. So today, the financial impact would be the software license, and the professional services and maintenance is seventeen thousand nine fifty-three, and a purchase of a scanner would be four hundred and forty-nine. And the project was budgeted back in two thousand twenty-one in capital projects, it just didn't come through because we weren't satisfied with, because it couldn't pull in our highway department and that kinda thing, but we got that working or capability now, they wrote the program to do so. So it, it was budgeted like at twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars, because there, they weren't sure how many licenses we would need for these operators, but with the size of our county, they believed five would be sufficient, and that's what's written in for that seventeen thousand, so that's where the price difference is. And then in the future, the manual maintenance on this program would be about eighteen hundred dollars.
So is this the company Sharon actually asked you what you needed and then wrote the program?
Right.
That's pretty unique.
So there are like two companies, right? Because this went through IT?
Yes.
Now, is this the one that the social services weren't gonna use, or is that the other company?
Yeah, but that, that was.
You remember, we had that discussion?
Yes, but it was a different type of workflow that we're talking about there. That was specifically related to how social services does their work, not related to bills, but to everything else that they do. And whereas this is a little bit less complex than what that is. So this is a fairly commonly used software across the state, from what we had found, and between the two options that were already integrated with IFS, which is our financial software, you know, this was determined to be the, the best option that was out there.
Okay, because I, I thought there is a little concern there on fills in whether this one would work, or am I missing something?
That's what Paul's talking about.
That's exactly what, yeah, exactly. And so, but through those discussions with Sue's, the highway accountant, and Sharon in her office, they determined that there's a workaround that is.
Gotcha.
Yeah, because before, we, we weren't comfortable with that piece, and they said, well, let's talk about that, and then we had three or four conversations, and then they wrote the program already so that we knew it would be there and workable prior to buying the product, and then finding out if they could make it work or not, so. So yeah, highway's at a, at a comfort level, not with it, because it pulls out all the.
Because I think I missed the last IT meeting that you were probably there, but the one before we're talking about.
Yeah, that would be correct.
Gotcha. So the, this is a different program for each?
No, it, no, it'll integrate them all, that's the beauty part of this one.
This is a program that every department's gonna use because of the fact that the highway department uses cost accounting, they have extra steps that they take in their.
But social service doesn't use it?
Not in the same way that highway does. In social services, it's, it's time accounting related to the different programs that are there. This with these, because of all the material costs and equipment costs and things like that, that highway is purchasing, they do their cost accounting slightly differently, so. Ultimately.
Okay.
Without getting into the details of all of it.
Gonna make life easier for Sharon.
Yeah.
And it's budgeted, that's I guess all I need to know.
Yes, it, it'll make life easier for departments across the board.
So the, will each department head then require some training, that, is training thing involved in here?
Yeah, there, there will be some, but this here company will come out onsite, and they're gonna train the finance office first, so we're gonna kind of train the trainer so that we have a really good handle on it. And then if, depending on how the departments want it, if they wanna do it, they'll come out and do additional training for them. But if it's kind of some minor things, or just what do we, or here, that kinda stuff, we should be able to know that by then, and then be able to walk the, the department through.
And that's included, isn't it?
Yes, all that, that services.
So everything will be, we won't have, everything will be scanned in?
Right.
They don't have to do it separate?
Because sometimes now bills are coming electronic to the department's email or the invoices are, so if that's the case, you just open the other program, you slide it or scan it into, you don't even really scan it, you click and move it into that workflow. It's the ones that still come by paper that you would scan in, and once it's scanned in, then it's electronic from.
Do we, what percent, do we get a lot of bills electronically now?
Well, what we do now, if they come electronically, we print them.
Right.
And then we put them, so I can't tell, I mean, I know that I maybe.
So you get them, and then you have to print them out anyway?
Right, to, to do the process. But right now, I probably get a fourth of my bills electronically that I print to, to do that, so. And once we do this, we'll start sending out some kinda notification in with our checks that we take, you know, we can give you an email address if you wanna send your invoices electronically, and then start that process.
Okay.
Madam Chair, move to approve purchase agreement with Information Systems Corporation to purchase the electronic document management system and purchase of scanner.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bradison, any quite more discussion?
Uh, yes, couple times, what this option? Eighteen thousand dollar option, I mean, is that, you know, slice your bread and butter your toast, or?
Yeah, that, that was the one where, where, when the invoice comes in, you set up templates for those, like our standard ones, which, you know, the majority of them, you know, we get over and over and over, and then that's where it will read their particular invoice and find out where the date is, where the invoice number is, the description, and then it reads that, as long as it's in a typed format, it'll read that and automatically fill that into, to the AP workflow system, so you're not doing anything, because right now with the piece we're having, the invoice is gonna be on one screen, that, the workflow will be on the other, and then you're gonna look at the invoice number and type it in. And then after that, it goes, it's in there. With that second option of the imaging, it will pick those pieces out that you need and automatically put them on that, into the AP workflow. So the advantage, or the reason they have that is, is like some counties have all their accountants in one area, and so every bill comes, that comes into the county comes into one area. And so it's easier for them, and we can do this, I mean, it's an option we have if, if we're interested in doing that, but then we'd have to talk to the department's heads and say, are you comfortable with a bill coming just to one area and having us open it and send it back out, and that kinda thing?
Well.
Maybe this discussion that they.
I, I just wanted to, I mean, obviously, you didn't have it in your, in your request for board action, so I'm assuming you're, you're fine with the.
Yeah, we were gonna see how time consuming that is, because right now, we're cutting back a lot of time because you're only keying in your, your own information, and we're not double-entering everything. Where before, every department enters it, it comes to our office, and then we re-enter it into the system, so that's gonna cut back on a lot of data entry there. The other piece just makes it a, a little bit smoother, where you're not keen as much in on that very initial.
And when, when Sharon and I talked about it, one of the things we wanted to do was, you know, this process is already gonna be a change. We don't wanna take too big of a bite at once, let's, let's go through this first step here. If we find that this is working really well for us, and we, but we think that we can be more efficient by adding on this other thing, then we'll come back and talk to you about that, but we wanna take it one step at a time.
Yeah, and if we can add it on at any time, I talked to him about that, he said it'd be less cost upfront if you didn't bolt together, because we're all here doing the same thing, he said, but it's not, it really doesn't make that much of a difference either, and if you get the other pieces, one won't be too much harder.
One other question I get asked all the time is, are you, do we have the ability to send checks to townships electronically?
Yes, that's gonna be our.
That be something.
This is gonna be our next step after this, yeah, so we're gonna get this here going, the invoice is coming in, then the next piece we're looking at is the payables going out.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is on the, the radar, on that list of.
Do they prefer on electronic?
That's.
I think so, especially for the townships and stuff, because they're pretty big checks, and they come to the clerk of the township, and I, I think sometimes they're not, it's usually their home address and that kinda thing, and to actually get it to the bank and that kinda thing is. They prefer to.
I've been asked that a couple times, I said.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, I mean, saying, not just townships, I mean, if we have mileage coming, it's been paper sent to us now, that would come in electronic form direct to the bank too.
That's what I told the townships, I said, well, I know we get our mileage checks in the house.
Yeah.
There's a reason.
So we would eliminate a lot of postage potentially.
Right.
Down the road, so.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you Sharon. Greg Schultz, Land Use Director.
Morning Greg Schultz, Land Use Director, this morning I got seven items for approval from a July twelfth PC. First one is gonna be Andrew Eng, landscape project on Lake Washington. This is for a, let's see. Boulder stones, riprap, flagstone, approximately forty-seven cubic yards of materials we brought in, insurance project. Total impervious after the project will be about fourteen percent. Ethan Jensen did comment on this one, he said no DNR permit would be required for the project. As you see, it's pretty steep.
Steep hill.
So we'll put boulder wall, kinda terrace that bottom part, is what they're gonna be doing.
What determines the need or no need for a DNR permit?
How much is gonna impact the shoreline, the actual, the interface between the water and the shore, much riprap.
Like number of feet along the shore, or like you were mentioning, the tight door.
It's into the water.
How much work you're gonna do in that?
Like cubic yards of stuff, or?
You're allowed to go about six feet in the water without a permit, once you get into, into the water table more than that, that requires a DNR permit, or if they're gonna take out excessive vegetation along the shoreline?
Okay.
That would require a, a permit, well.
What happens if they take out excessive vegetation without permission? Anything?
Gotta put it back.
Nothing if they don't get caught, you can put it back.
You made.
You, the conservation officers are pretty good about noticing that and letting us know if they're taking out excessive vegetation, traveling around, calling us and seeing if they have a permit, if they don't have a permit, or letting, letting Andrew know if the people have that permit.
Do you ever get neighbors calling in neighbors?
Oh, I'll bet.
Yes?
They're our best source.
Is that a rhetorical question?
Madam Chair, move to approve the application for conditional use permit to move the ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and fifty cubic yards of material to shoreline District of General Development, Lake Washington, with the conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Shifel Bine, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Next item I have is a Novell Energy Solution. Next item I have is a Novell Energy Solutions, ZLM Enterprises for one megawatt solar project located. Um, in County, Alpha County Stadium Highway six, section thirty-four, township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, Dassel Township. For parcel zero seven zero five three two zero zero zero. This is contiguous to the actual Dassel city limits, of which they signed a waiver in May twenty-two. To allow the project to be within a thousand feet of the city limits. See on this parcel here, there are two existing solar projects on there already. This is gonna be kinda sandwiched to the east and to the north of the one project. A difference in this project is gonna be on trackers, as you see in the more spread out on the map to the right there you're looking at. This is a tracking system, so they're all on a thirty-five dual axis tracking with about seventy-eight solar panels per tracking. But the height difference, they're gonna be about thirty feet in the air, that's what they're gonna be. Claiming they're more efficient, there's less, there's only twenty-seven hundred and I believe fifty, um, twenty-seven hundred and forty actual solar panels. For one megawatt, which is seen in the next one, with the older standards, as the Bueller project is four thousand solar panels for the same amount of. Of energy produced.
Is this a different project that there was some contention before? Is this a different one?
This is the one that moved, I believe, to the south. The one before was gonna actually be in the city limits, right in the city of Dassel.
Okay, so they.
That's what the city of Dassel had annexed that property, now into their city and pushed this to the south.
Gotcha.
Across, out of the city limits.
So it's the same company, but they moved? Okay.
Well, this is, uh, this is the consolation prize.
For the solar.
And this is what we, we, uh, put the amendment in, well, having to have a waiver, with a thousand feet within city limits and seven hundred and fifty. Feet from non-ordered residents in this project.
So is this the first project that would be with that language? Gotcha.
Was there anyone from the public there to speak against it?
Nobody from the public.
There was before though, once it was in city limits. I got some calls on that one, so. This is, he said the consolation prize, I guess.
Where does the energy generated go from something like this? Does it go to the city of Dassel? Does it go just on the grid?
Goes on the grid.
XL Energy.
There's a grid that runs through this property, kinda goes up, actually it's to the, a little bit to the west that this will tie into. And go to the grid, go to transformer now. And that's the bottleneck that talked about why we had to have extensions recently. Is XL is doing studies on how it's gonna impact the grid, these, these, uh, systems that are coming in. How they handle a transformer base, I believe is their main issue, they handle that power coming in.
So you said that, uh, the other panels where they're real close together, they produce a megawatt?
Nope.
And it's how many less panels to produce the megawatt on this?
About, seems to be about fifteen hundred less.
Okay.
This is about twenty-seven, it's four thousand megawatt approximately. But these are higher in the air, these are thirty feet in the air, so.
Any other?
Thirty feet in the air.
Sorry.
Yeah, these are thirty feet in air, cause they're on a tracker system that rotates with them, so they're very.
And the tips, that might be the top of the panel, they're big panels.
Just seem along farm sites, along the farm sites. You'll see those types of trackers, you know, more and more.
And this is a pride of individual putting this on his own personal property?
Yeah, he's getting, yeah, he's leasing his property, just in the.
And he'll, he'll receive rent from the company.
Years, about thirty years, yeah.
You see, they had some discussion about disposal. It's always been kind of a concern of, when these things go. If they go south, what's, who's gonna be responsible for this?
Well, Kim Hempel seemed to have asked a lot of questions. She has done a lot of research, uh, on this. Cause they are, they have a lot of lead within the panel.
Some Camden and stuff like that, heavy metal in there, that's an issue that, it's only one place, I believe in Missouri right now, it does recycling. So far, like this individual said, twenty-five years, you know, they hope the market opens up, but they don't know. But ultimately, as far as the decommissioning of these sites, ultimately that's between the landlord and the lease site. So unless they foreclose the property, then kind of, that's why we have a seventy-five thousand dollar bond on there. If they foreclose the property and we're charged with decommissioning, that's what that money is there for. Until that property gets foreclosed on, it's ultimately between the landowners and the solar companies to decommission.
So, when you say foreclosed, so if this person has a mortgage on this piece of property and failed to make his mortgage and the bank had to foreclose or the lending institution. We would be forced to use the bond to clean it up?
So if, so if, if they sold the property to someone else, or if the bank took it over and sold it, we would be responsible for it? Or would it be if it becomes tax forfeit?
Or if it becomes tax forfeit.
There we go, tax forfeit.
Tax forfeit.
Okay.
Not if it's, not if it's bank.
The rent, the rent would pay the mortgage.
Yep.
You know, I mean, there's enough.
They'd pay quite well to lease this property to these companies.
But the tax part, that makes sense.
That's where it becomes our property, otherwise it's still private property.
Yeah.
Still private.
The bank could take it over. I mean, they'd be foolish.
All right, any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve an application for conditional use permit to construct solar garden on parcel zero seven zero five three two zero zero zero. Consisting approximately thirty-five trackers with twenty-seven hundred and thirty solar panels to generate one megawatt of power.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bradis, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Now, the next item is a, is conditional use permit fifteen nine oh six, one megawatt solar project located approximately two miles north of Grove City. County Stadium Highway twenty-five, section twenty-five, Township one twenty, range thirty-two, Sweet Grove Township, parcel one six zero two zero seven zero zero zero. You may recognize this one because this one is actually approved back in twenty twenty. Same project did not go through to the XL Energy, uh, agreements, having gone through and actually had an extension in twenty twenty-one to twenty-two. This is back on the docket again, so.
So it was approved in twenty twenty?
Born twenty, and it extended in twenty twenty-one.
That's no language in that, right? Cause it was approved ahead of time.
This was, uh.
But they let it expire, they didn't get the extension in for the twenty twenty-two, that's why they're reapplying now, so.
So this one isn't up and running yet?
No.
No, this is common, it'll be two to three years old. Cause there was that, something with XL and the federal government and I think federal government changed requirements XL. To meet their criteria and XL had to go out and reevaluate everyone at each site.
I, I kinda remember this, I was on the planning and zoning back then, so I kinda remember this one, a little bit, but.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve an application for a conditional use permit to construct solar garden on parcel one six zero two zero seven zero zero zero. Consisting approximately four thousand solar panels to generate one.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item I have is a conditional use permit fifteen nine oh nine for landscape project at a property located twenty-eight one sixty-seven, six hundred and sixty. Eighth Avenue, Litchfield, Minnesota, Dunn's Lake Shoreland Project, the Wagner's. This is going to be total materials for the project to be eleven yards of boulders, ten yards of riprap, fifteen yards steps, ten yards of sand. For approximately forty-six cubic yards of materials to be brought into the shore impact zone for this project. After the project's completed, it'll be approximately about two percent moving the impervious, so. Ethan Jensen, at the time of the meeting and at the time of this meeting, had, has not commented on this project.
So can it even move forward if it doesn't have the DNR approval?
Sure, yeah, it doesn't go into the shoreline, I don't know.
So that's the, what it's proposed to look like down the road?
Exactly.
What, what happens if he comes back and says, nope?
It'll make him get a permit, it'll be our permit, part of it. It's not dependent on our permit.
Okay.
So.
So you basically just ask Ethan, is a permit required or not?
Yes.
Not whether it's gonna be approved or not?
If it is, he goes through the steps with the, with the landowners to get the DNR permit. Our CUP is not dependent on his approval.
It basically is, and it's up to the landowner's discretion to decide whether he wants to come for the CUP before he has a DNR. I mean, that's their discretion, right? If they wanna come get the CUP prior to having DNR approval, that's. Their gamble.
Cause we're not gonna approve anything as far as vegetation in the shoreline, into the actual water table far enough that. We're not gonna step our bounds in his territory, so.
And one of the conditions is that all required additional permits should be obtained if needed prior to commencing the project. A project extends beyond the scope submitted, so we're saying that if you need other permits, you need to get those permits before you can start the work.
Okay, no other discussion, I'd look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the application for a CUP to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone. Fifty cubic yards of material in the shore land district of recreational development Dunn's Lake with the conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbine, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Bradis, any, any, uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next item I have is for a rezoning and a preliminary plat for this property located section twenty-two Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, Dassel Township. Parcel zero seven one zero four seven zero zero zero. This rezoning plat is made up of eighteen point five five acre parcel zero seven one zero four seven. This parcel is actually lot three block one of Asplin Woods, which was platted back in twenty twenty. So the south part of this property is particularly located in Shoreland District of Recreation Development, Class Long Lake. So what the Hendricksons are proposing is to take this eighteen point five five acre parcel and split it up into three lots. One lot, lot one will be nine acres, lot two will be three point nine one acres, lot three will be five point six four acres. And currently it's, it's rezoned R one from that twenty twenty plat, but he wants to rezonate to R two. Which allows a little more flexibility on agricultural uses such as orchards, vineyards. He can have a couple animal units on there with that with an IUP as well, so he wants to replat it. That's why they're replating it from R one to R two.
I remember that one. Di- wasn't there an issue with access?
On this one?
Yes.
Um, not on the lot three, because the access was there. Yes, I mean, recently, recently, yeah, um, Phil wants the access to be directly adjacent to, um. It was the two hundred and forty-seventh street, that's what he wants to come right across. You see on the east side, you get two hundred and forty-seventh street coming from Long Lake, he wants it access to be right directly across from there, so. And then Ryan, Ryan Crawl is a neighbor to the east, who has that property directly to the east. There's an issue with the proposed driveway and the preliminary plat, so Ryan and, and Lana talked about it. And they're gonna change that road access, or that's gonna actually be shifted down and across to two forty-seven, which Phil has approved along there. So it won't affect the drainage on that as much. So when it gets to the final plat, that'll be changed.
So they'll have one access for all three properties?
One access for all three, correct, yep.
Cause that piece directly to the east, as I recall, wasn't that, isn't that a real rolling area?
Very roly and there's a, there's a, the place to ease is Ryan's place is pretty, it's very roly there.
Yeah.
It's a, it's got a lot of contours going on there for drainage, and to the west, it's very roly too.
Any further questions?
So this item here is actually be a two, one for the rezoning from R one to R two and then.
So any two separate motions?
Two separate motions.
I'd be looking for a motion for the rezoning application for the first.
You wanna take them individually then?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a rezoning application to change the entire parcel oh seven one oh four seven thousand. From R one suburban residential district to R two rural residential district to allow for the three lot plat of Asplin Ridge.
Motion by Commissioner Bradis, do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Or Schmidt, any other questions on this motion?
One last question before we vote, was there anyone from the public at that meeting?
Other than the neighbor Ryan, Crawl?
And his only concern was that?
The drainage from the roadway and forwards, things gonna be put in place on that road.
And that was satisfactorily answered for him?
Yes, it was.
Uh, just for curiosity, when you go from R one to R two, so if you kept it at R one, you can't have animals or any orchards or something like that?
Exactly.
Period?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Animal units are allowed through an IUP, up to two with an IUP. With R one, it's not, unless you get a variance. You take a variance to get those types of uses on that property.
Was that the maximum lots they could have in that area anyway? I was just curious why?
They could add more lots, you know, the basic size on that, a hundred thousand square feet per lot, that's the minimum size requirement. Two hundred feet of width and a hundred thousand square feet is the minimum.
Mm-hmm.
You could've put a lot more lots in there.
But at this point, they must've just valued that someone wa- would wanna put animals or whatever, you said orchards or horses or something.
They had the options to put animals.
I guess so, would have to be, there isn't a lot you could.
And the, the piece is sitting back there, i- it.
Off the road.
Yeah, it would be kind of secluded, each one of those lots could be very secluded from one another, so.
Gotcha.
And when you say an animal unit, this re- rezoning will allow two animal units.
An IUP, yeah.
On each of these, it's not determined by number of acres, cause one was nine acres and one was three.
Two for each.
Two animals on each, now when you say an animal, are we talking a cow, a horse, or a chicken?
Cow, cows are bound here.
Okay, so we're gonna, I could have two cows, or I could have so many chickens, or it, it's broken down somewhere, okay.
Any further discussion? Now I'll call for the question, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now I look for a motion for this, or a motion for the second part.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve a preliminary plat application for a three lot plat of Asplin Ridge located in section twenty-two Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine. Parcel zero seven one oh four seven, zero 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 of Dassel Township and partially located within the Shoreland District of Long Lake.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifelbine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
The last item I have is the final plat for a property located in Government Lot Five, section two. Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, Dassel Township, per parcel zero seven zero zero four one zero 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 and zero seven three two seven zero zero zero. Entire property here is going to R one, June twenty-first Commissioners' meeting. So this is R one, and this is for a three lot plat of Lund Hills. Lot one will be two point four nine acres, lot two will be two point five acres, lot three will be nineteen point two five acres. Title opinion been submitted by Emily, um, reviewed by Emily Woods, the county representative. Kind of submitted information to the township indicating they're okay with the plats as long as new colors are put on the access.
Move to approve.
Have any, okay, at this meeting, representatives, other than all or?
Madam Chair, move to approve final plat application for the three lot plat of Lund Hills. Located in section two Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, parcel zero seven zero zero four one zero zero zero. And zero seven, z- dash zero eight zero seven zero 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 of Dassel Township. And partially located within the Shoreland District of Big Swan Lake.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bradis, any further questions, discussion?
Now, when things like this.
This is the preliminary plat. They not send the final plat?
That's what you said, huh?
This is for the final plat, not the rezoning, preliminary plat, this is for the final plat.
This is?
So it's just titled.
It's just titled, it's titled correctly, the, the RBA is correct.
Julie, go ahead.
Does something like this then have to be coordinated with Phil, with the Highway Department or with the Township?
It's a little township since this is township rules.
Just township.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Phil Smalls, or in this case, not Phil Smalls. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Morning.
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 Mark Spees, Assistant Highway Engineer, pinch hitting for Phil Smalls. The first thing was to approve this consultant agreement for the Manana Bridge that's failing, four seven five one nine. That would be for Erickson Engineering. They would do the, they'd do the surveying on it, they would do the design of the bridge and the inspection while it was being built. The Highway Department, right now, we don't have anyone, we don't have enough people for one thing, we don't have a, we don't have a structural engineer on staff, so we wouldn't be able to approve of the designs anyway.
Looking for a motion?
Madam Chair, approve, make a motion to approve all the engineering services agreement of Erickson Engineering for not to exceed price of one hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars for the replacement of the existing bridge number four seven five one nine.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbine, do I hear a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, any other questions?
This has been discussed with Manana Township, there's expenses and.
Yes, their their cost would be approximately twenty thousand dollars. To pay for the design and the inspection.
Any further discussion?
Come out of a township bridge account.
And they're they're aware they're in discussion.
Yeah, I've talked to them.
They have a meeting tonight that they'll approve a portion of this.
Okay.
And they have, like you said, wrote their own road and bridge fund that they put money aside in for this, so.
Anybody else? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So then for that same bridge, we can discuss that a little bit, to approve that agreement with the township for that replacement. We'll have to, the county, we won't be any financial responsibility, but we'll have to make the pay vouchers and just do a little oversight on it.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the agreement with Manana Township for the replacement of existing bridge number four seven five one nine.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbine, do I hear a second?
Oh, second, Madam Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, any discussion?
Is there, when are they planning on doing this, refresh my memory? When's this bridge, when's the project supposed to go this fall?
They.
Any idea yet?
It's getting a little late, but they would like to do this year.
That's what I thought, okay, I just.
That bridge could probably save another year or two, but it's, it's getting to the point now where it's getting pretty serious.
That's a wooden bridge, huh? So when did they stop?
It's a bit, it's a, the crow comes in there too, the crow comes in and comes along the road and then under the bridge. So you get a lot of road bank damage, we put, Manana put riprap in there and stuff. Over the course of years to protect that road bank when the water level gets high, it's not a necessarily easy spot to work with. And it's hundred and eighty feet long, it's not a short bridge either, it's a big span.
They don't do many wooden bridges anymore though, do they?
No.
No.
It's really hard, right?
Yeah, cause they stopped doing wood.
I was surprised, this is seventy-nine, I was surprised it was wood then, that'd be one of the later ones.
We had a bunch of timber bridges that were all replaced around the same time, it was late seventies, mid seventies.
But I mean, after that, they had to start going to concrete and box culverts and different things.
But like you said, hundred and eighty feet's a fair piece.
Yeah, wow, that's a big, that's a wide part of the river right there.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So the next one is the detour agreement, which is, it'll be for Minnesota Highway fifteen, which is due to be under construction next year. So they they, Mindus is gonna detour the Highway fifteen traffic through Red County. And, but this traffic on Minnesota Highway twenty-four, which would, if they were traveling east to Highway fifteen, they wouldn't be able to get, they wouldn't be able to get through there. So they wanna detour them on our County seventeen, which has been used for the past year for the Highway fifteen project through Kimball.
How do they calculate that anyway?
I was looking at that.
Eighty-seven hundred, so.
It's it's.
Hundred bucks a day, it's what they basically did.
There is a formula they go through and it's, it's capped at maybe eighteen thousand. For the truck traffic that a road's receiving now, eight thousand, eight thousand dollars doesn't get you very far, but.
Do they, any of the townships ever step in and say, hey, they've been using my road too, because it's always a shortcut too? Cause I've heard that on the recent thing that, you know.
Right, and we have no control over that.
Twenty-one or something, or what was, when are they doing this south here, or the south of?
I'm hearing a lot about it on four, over there in in our townships, you know, cause if they Google it, there's shortcuts.
Oh, yeah.
And they're, you know, you got tractor trailers running down those gravel roads that aren't built for those things and.
You can only assign one detour and.
Gotcha.
What if people follow it, it's totally up to them.
The townships are kinda.
They're gonna find their own way.
Yep.
However, I contacted Phil on that, cause I got a call, and the state was really good. They were willing to put up signs if the road authority for that township would agree to it. They would put up, uh, not through road or something like that, so they will work with the township.
Local traffic, type stuff.
You say to get people to pay attention to the sign.
Well, I know, I always take Siri that says, you know, optional around eighteen minutes longer, you know, once she gives me them options. I always wonder why she even gives it to me, it's like, really?
Alright, so I'd look for a motion for this resolution.
Madam Chair, I move to approve of a resolution and detour agreement, ten forty-nine, four fifteen, with Minda for the use of Meeker Cache seventeen as a detour route for truck hu- trunk Highway fifteen and twenty-four construction.
Motion by Commissioner Bradus, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion?
Yeah, one quick question, do they recompute that if that, um, construction takes longer than anticipated?
If the detour takes longer? Yeah, it's, you put it up to them, it's, it's never been done before, as far as I know, but.
I think when I've talked to Phil about it, it's not, you you just don't make up for the traffic, they're not gonna pay you. When you figure it out per day and what it costs to re, you know, it's not ever gonna compute, so.
Nice, we get something.
Anything else? If not, Cory, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbine?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bradus?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Overt?
Yes. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Michelle Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator.
Good morning, Michelle Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. I have a few different policies to bring forward today for approval. Um, these are some exciting policies that we are putting in place that are going to assist us with moving the county forward with recruitment and retention. Um, so some of these are a little, um, advanced versus what some other counties are doing, so it's exciting to have these brought to you today. So the first one is our tuition reimbursement policy. Uh, so this would be a new policy, and it would provide eligible employees with the opportunity to request reimbursement for up to fifty percent of tuition, registration textbooks and lab fees with a maximum of forty-five hundred per calendar year. They would need to take courses that would be relevant to the, um, business that they're in. So the the, depending on the department and the position they're in. Um, they would need to have a grade of B or better, or a pass in a pass fail course. And if they were to terminate employment for any reason after receiving reimbursement, there is a schedule included in the policy for how they would need to reimburse the county.
Are you gonna do these all together?
Yeah, no, do you want me to just go through all of them at once?
That would be what I think, unless someone else.
Just a quick question there on that one, is that a, so it's, uh, prorated basically, so if they're here for.
Correct, yeah.
Two years and.
Yeah.
But the requirement was three days payback, thirty percent.
Yeah, so it would.
Okay, I don't need to know.
Okay, okay.
I'm I'm assuming it wouldn't be easy to collect though if they were no longer here, would it?
We actually have a, um, document that they would sign, and if they're in a union, they have a MOU or MOA that they would sign. Um, so they have actual documents that they would sign saying that they would reimburse, so.
And do we attempt to take it out of their last paycheck if we know they're leaving?
Yeah.
Is Andrew in charge of making sure they don't change a D to a B then?
I would've never thought of that.
Oh, yeah.
I was thinking it sounds like experienced.
Yeah, that's, I heard he had really good grades.
Yeah. If it's questionable, we'll send it to the evidence lab.
So then the next one would be the student student loan assistance policy. So this would, uh, mirror the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program that is federally out there already. Um, however, this would help, uh, bridge the gap between when someone becomes fully eligible for that, which is ten years or a hundred and twenty, uh, payments. So this would be for full-time employees only, since that mirrors what the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program does. Uh, and it would provide employees with the opportunity to request reimbursement for up to fifty percent of student loan assistance with a maximum of one thousand dollars per calendar year. Uh, or until the employee is eligible for payoff through the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. And it would only be for loans that are the William D Ford Federal Direct Loan, which is also what the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program requires as well. And, uh, it has the reimbursement if someone were to leave after receiving assistance. Uh, they would pay back hundred percent of any amounts paid during the twelve months prior to the employee's termination date.
Questions?
Uh, the next one is our internship policy, so this is also a new policy. Um, we have had interns in the past here, but this this policy would formalize our process. Uh, it would formalize the process for the eligibility and payment, if applicable, of interns. So it would provide departments with the ability to have paid internships, which is not something that we have done previously. Uh, it would give the departments the opportunity to set, uh, some of those those boundaries as far as what they want for the wage to be for the interns and, uh, what the requirements of that would be. So this would just formalize what we've been doing, except for the additional paid piece, it would add that piece.
You're doing great.
So then the last one is the compensation policy, so this would be updating a current policy. Uh, this would formalize the process in regards to the criteria that is taken into consideration when we are making offers to candidates for employment. Um, so this would add criteria such as the applicant's experience, education, the internal equity within the county, and the level of recruitment difficulties of filling the position. Um, it clarifies that a department head that's recommending that a candidate starts at a beginning salary of over ten percent of the base of the range, would, uh, complete a hiring proposal form, so that, uh, formalizes that process. And then they would submit it to, uh, the county administrator and myself for approval prior to extending the offer to the candidate. So formalizes that process.
So when you say formalizes, will these not be coming before the Personnel Committee?
Right now, that's what is happening as as well, so if that is something.
That's a bit of a concern to me.
They they will continue to do so.
Yep.
Oh, but you're, the recommendations are gonna come.
Yes, wha- what we're formalizing is the, in policy, the criteria that we consider when we're gonna start someone above a certain step.
So so you're gonna decide if they meet that criteria before it even comes before our personnel?
Yeah, it helps that process, you know, so there's maybe a little less subjectivity in in some of these opportunities.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, move to approve the new and updated Maker County Personnel Policies.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Bradus. I have one question. You know, this twi- I like this tuition reimbursement, the student loan assistance, are we gonna be able to track if that's improved the candidates? Are we gonna be able to look back and say our candidates now are, we're getting.
Sure, yeah.
Better candidates or more more experienced candidates or. So we know if it pays off to be, you know, to see how this is working.
What's difficult to measure is the people who aren't applying today, because we don't know who they are. What we can do is we can certainly look, you know, over time and see, yeah, like you said, are we getting candidates who may be more, are we taking, getting people who are taking advantage of these programs? And are, is it because we have these programs that was a reason why they chose to either stay with their employment with the county or or chose to apply and and accept a position?
So we're hoping it helps with more qualified candidates, we're hoping it adds some longevity to our candidates. And we're gonna be able to measure that some way. So when they apply, you know, are we gonna, you know, are we gonna be able to find out if they applied because of, do you know what I'm asking?
So we do a thirty day check-in, we do a thirty and a ninety day check-in with people once they start. And I've added to our thirty day check-in questions regarding this as well as the, um, the, uh, hiring incentive. So that we can find out what were the reasons that they chose to apply, why did they choose the county over other options? And so this would include, that would be included in these questions that are on that thirty day check-in.
Good, and my last question is, when we talk about starting people over ten percent above, I'm not opposed to that all the time. However, we're doing, we're doing salary studies, you know, to hopefully where we're in line. And so it concerns me with everything that's going forward, as far as what, you know, cost of living and things, that if we're up to date on that, we should, I'm assuming we should have less of that.
Yes, depending on.
Though I don't know if we've seen less of it since our last study, so.
Yeah, and we'll and we'll talk about that more with, um, Tessa today, but yeah, especially depending on the the position. Some of the positions just are a lot harder to fill, but yes.
Well, and if we're, and if we're hiring a person who has many years of experience that are directly related, we're to get that person then who can step in and provide that experience, um, it may be beneficial for us to pay higher on the range than start them at the bottom, so.
I just think we're doing a lot of things, and we have to keep that in mind as we, as I'm sure you are, as one more, so. Anyway, any other questions? It's been so long, we have a motion on the table, correct, Cory?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, I just do wanna take a moment to thank the board for, um, being willing to have these policies in place. Um, I I really am grateful for your support with this, so thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Letson.
Yes, so, uh, today I have for you two quotes from Marco for the Purchase Installation of Meeting Room Technology. This would be for our community rooms as well as, um, Family Services Room two hundred. Uh, the the purpose of these projects is to install technology similar to what we have in this room, um, to allow us to use those. um, to allow us to use those spaces at a, at a higher level than what we're doing today. Um, it's not exactly what we have in the room here, the, the camera system, the video recording, those things are not included in it. But, you know, large monitors with the ability to, um, cast, uh, you know, remotely or plugged in, additionally having the ability to, um, run, uh, conference calls from in there, so each of them will have like media bars with cameras built into them, uh, so we can do Zoom meetings or things like that from those rooms. And, you know, conceivably, we could, you know, run hybrid trainings where you have some folks who are participating, uh, virtually, some folks who are participating, uh, onsite. And then, uh, it's going to allow us to use those spaces, like I said, um, you know, with a little bit, um, you know, more of an ability to, to provide materials, uh, you know, when we do the township meeting on an annual basis, you know, you recall this last year, we had kind of a tiny projection up on the, the wall there, and it wasn't particularly useful for some of the folks who were in the room. This is going to improve that for us. Uh, so really, this is kind of modernizing those rooms and allowing them to be used, uh, in a bunch, much better fashion. When we looked at, um, budgeting for this, specifically the community rooms last year, we got a few different options, um, from Marco. One of them, or we had, I think, three options that were all, you know, fairly high priced, and then we got another option that was pretty bare bones. It was basically some monitors that you could plug into. As we, uh, re-engaged them in our conversation this year, uh, we wanted to make sure that one of the key elements for me, as I was looking at this, how can we make this the most functional use possible? I wanted us to be able to use both screens projecting the same thing at the same time, so that you could have, you know, the room full of people and then have everyone be able to see the two screens without having to orient the room in such a way that you're only using one screen. In order to do that, and, um, also be able to, you know, operate each independently and to install, um, wall-mounted control systems, so that you don't have a, a TV remote that you're using to try and switch between inputs that at some point is going to become misplaced. Uh, we wanted to be able to have something that was in there, so it was not only easy for staff to use, but for the community to use when they use those rooms. Uh, it, it added some cost onto it from what we had, um, seen previously. But those additional features, I feel, are, are really important to make sure that we're able to, um, maximize the use of that room. So, before you, I have, uh, two quotes, uh, from Marco, uh, the total cost, uh, of which is, um, about, uh, fifty-one thousand dollars, fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, and, uh, the so, um, Family Services two hundred, uh, we have, um, money budget for that, and the Social Services budget will allow, which will allow us to take advantage of the administrative reimbursement through there, and then we have, uh, money budgeted in the American Rescue Plan, um, out of American Rescue Plan dollars in our Capital Projects Fund for the community rooms. So with that, move over for any questions.
The, um, Polycam Studio or?
Mm-hmm.
Video bar. So if we're having a, a meeting, is that something that sits to the front so I can see everything, or is it?
Yeah, my understanding is it's gonna be like a soundbar that sits underneath the, the TV. It's all an integrated system.
Oh, okay, okay.
So this is upgrading a room at Social Services and the two rooms that we have downstairs, so it's?
It's three rooms total.
Three rooms.
Yes. The, the room over at the Family Services Building is the old library room, where we have a lot of meetings.
Is, is this a good idea to do this now, contemplating our remodel?
Yes, because, uh, as you recall, in our concept plan, we, while we've identified that space in the community rooms as being for, you know, a training room in the future, uh, we don't have any remodel associated with that. And so this is that first step.
Is Marco who we always, I mean, do we reach out to anybody else besides Mark?
Marco was the company who, um, you know, designed this system for us.
Some issues in here, didn't we?
We've had some issues, but it, it sounds like it may not necessarily be related to, i- it's, it's not related to the, the presenting of the information, it's more related to the broadcasting of information, which that's not included in, in this project.
So we just.
Which that may be a firewall issue, there's things that we're still troubleshooting through.
But we don't reach out to anyone else for pricing when we're doing this.
Uh, I, and this one, we did not, and it's because of the, um, you know, the knowledge that, that Marco has with the, what we've done in the past of what it is that we're looking to do here.
That always kinda concerns me, no matter what pro- and I'm fine, but I'm just saying that we had stuck with one company and we don't look further, and maybe we should be at times when we do things, so.
This was, this project was like eighty-five thousand for this, while not for this room?
Yes, that's.
I believe, I remember it.
So it doesn't, I'm sorry, Julie.
Oh, and, and do our IT people have a, have they the knowledge to, to troubleshoot and help folks? Like if I wanna have a meeting downstairs, would our IT people be able to help me with that?
Yes, yes.
So they're on board with this project as well?
Yeah, Mary's been very involved in this process up to this point, and we've identified two staff members in their department to learn how to, you know, be able to provide that user support.
Yep, okay.
So that's two screens downstairs, two and two hundred?
One and two hundred.
One.
Yeah, the one and two hundred would be on a, a mobile cart, so you can move it around the room in different areas, depending on how you have the room set up. Cause as we looked at that space, the wiring that you would need to do, additional wiring you would need to do in the room to make it so that, um, it was all where you would want to kind of put a screen, uh, in the, kinda the historical nature of the room. We'd felt that doing something that was on a mobile cart worked the best.
Excuse me, a couple of things, um, when, uh, when we budget twelve thousand for the social service, and it's only nine, does that mean the social service, basically, their fund is increased by three thousand, basically?
Um.
Uh, you know, when we, when we say, okay, we allotted twelve thousand to social services, and it turns up nine, are they the ones that actually keep that in their social service fund?
Yeah, we've, we've budgeted for it in the Human Services Fund, and so those funds would remain in there. But as you know, on an annual basis, we, you know, determine.
Okay.
What that fund balance level should be and how we should budget for it, so.
And then investing forty-two thousand into these, uh, community rooms that are just kinda geared for training, is that always been the intent to actually keep using them as a community room, to so to speak? I thought there's a point where it was, uh, that, uh, that you wanted it more geared towards, uh, the training, because they're already, so we're not gaining anything then?
Well, as we, even as we move and use the space more for.
More, if it was more, uh, IT compatible.
Yeah, so as we, as we kind of shift the use of the buildings and as we use those more for training, then this technology becomes even more useful in that space, if that makes sense.
When, when we shift in, will that, because this will be basically the Justice Center, will it be open to community meetings anymore, or will it be more?
I think it's one of the things that we're gonna need to discuss, is how we wanna do that. But regardless, if those community meetings shift over to the Family Services Building, then they would be able to use the, the technology that's in that room.
And we do have AMC coming this fall, so we wanna have nice projection screens.
Yeah.
For our meeting there, just in that trouble, but, um.
Yeah, that's my biggest, uh, thing, is like going, do we need to invest in something into the community rooms? If they aren't even gonna be used for community rooms, and everything will get shifted, I'd think more to the social service two hundred room.
Primarily being used by staff, that, that technology's still gonna be heavily used for training or for other staff meetings or, or things like that, absolutely.
Will we lose?
Good question.
Will we, will we lose community availability of the basement rooms once the remodel is done?
As I said, that's gonna be a discussion for you all, how you want that space to be.
Discussion will be about security, because after a certain, like, in the evening right now, if you walk in here, we've had this discussion, you can walk in this building. I left one night, I always tell this story, came back, use the restroom, the guy was doing the carpets, he never even knew I was there, and walked back out again. Not his fault, he had a machine going, doors are wide open. So, so that's a discussion that we have to have as a group after, I think. But I think Danny has a legitimate question. If we're gonna steer away from there, should we be spending that money there?
I do think that we should, because right now, in this building, the only room that we have technology to be able to host meetings like this is in this room right here, and so we use it quite a bit to be able to display things on the screens.
When we move everything to social service, what's the ap- appetite for people, you know, on all those departments to actually wanna have a meeting here?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't they rather just use two hundred?
If you, if you have a space where you need to get a hundred people in, this is still the one room that we have in the county that you can fit that large of a group.
How many people can you get in two hundred?
Uh, fifty, forty-five, if you take out the tables, yeah.
Cause I think you'd like, whenever Barb has a bigger meeting, she just has it in, uh, what do you, I can't remember, the other building, whatever.
We.
The Civic?
Well, if you go down there today, you'll see that Barb is hosting, um, training for election judges, and she will be doing so for the next two weeks.
But I think she has a max number of that on forty or forty-five, so she could be meeting there with that.
Conceivably. Um, you know, the township meetings, we would still.
That's true.
On an annual basis. Um, and then plus, you know, law enforcement does, you know, regular training, they do, you know, their larger staff meetings that would occur in there, and, um, there, there's, there will be plenty of use of this space.
And the discussion is still gonna come later on, how much we use this building in the evening, so.
Right, yeah.
So what's the total dollar figure on this motion?
Apologize, I did not put it in there, but I will.
Fifty-one thousand six hundred and.
And basically, we got thirty-six.
Forty-two thousand, is it?
Correct.
Forty-two, five, thirty-one.
Fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars.
You got a nine thousand.
And how much is already coming from other resources?
So we have, so nine thousand eighty-six dollars of that would come out of the Social Services Budget, and the balance forty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one would have come out of our Capital Projects Fund, out of the American Rescue Plan dollars.
Okay. Any more questions? Look for a motion. Do you think that's, uh, the other part, do you think that's adequate for the Room two hundred in terms of? Because I do think it's gonna get used that much more often, and this one will get used that.
That much more.
That's my, that's my big, big ado- boo about this, it's like going.
To, to Danny's point, correct me if I'm wrong, if we found that one not being used as much, that technology is movable, could go.
Yeah, I mean, there would be, there would be cost associated with that.
Yes, but we could.
Conceivably, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're speaking about evening meetings probably, but during the day, if we have big meetings, you know.
That, that's what I'm thinking about is.
Meets or if we have a group, we have, uh, every once in a while, every certain time, uh, CCT comes here. There was times they had to crowd into this room because that downstairs, so.
MC, DC.
Yeah, so they can be used during the day, but I'm curious, like Danny is, what the usage will be after? Cause then you're gonna have to probably hire somebody to run the, the security, and so that's a whole different discussion, isn't it?
Makes you feel any better, we're two years away from having that project done, and by that time, this technology would be obsolete.
It makes us all feel wonderful, Stakes.
Just trying to help.
One in every crown, I guess. All right.
One of those in, in the community room downstairs could be fixed to the wall, the other could be a mobile unit too.
I, I wouldn't recommend that.
Wouldn't?
No.
Okay.
No. Um, the, the reason we chose the mobile unit for two hundred was not because of the size of the meetings that are anticipated in there, it's because of the configuration of the room.
Okay.
That's the reason.
So you can move it around in the room?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the intent isn't to take it out to other places in the building.
Yeah.
You know, the intent is to keep it in the room, but you can adjust it, adjust the room how you need it.
We, we have to remember too, we also will have the auditorium, if it's not being used by the school, that we could use.
But will.
We just wouldn't have any tech, we wouldn't have any technology there, but we would have, if we had a unforeseen case that we had a hundred and fifty attendees, theoretically, if it was more of a lecture-type presentation, just like you did with the American Rescue Plan money, or not, uh, the CARESAC money, you had that presentation in the auditorium. You and Paul and, um, Mike.
We had a.
All of the township sat in the audience.
We had our tobacco, uh, when they were having, remember that Cory? We filled up the bottom of the auditorium when we had the public hearing on whether they were gonna ban tobacco in Meeker Counties.
And that is kind of a nice place to, to do it from, cause you're elevated, the group is there, it's easy to see. So, I mean, we have other options, so.
All right, I'm getting behind here, so any other discussion on this? If not, I'd look for a motion, back to that again.
Move to approve two quotes from Marco for the purchase and installation of meeting room technology in Family Services Center two hundred and the community room.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
I'll second Madam Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, all in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to go into close.
Madam Chair, move to, move to a closed session.
Pursuant to.
I was gonna do that, but he interrupted me.
Thirteen D O three for labor negotiation strategies.
Yes, as Andrew added to that motion.
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Johnson to go into closed session for the purpose of labor negotiations, negotiation strategy Minnesota statute, thirteen D dot O three. Who stays in the room just?
I need, is there a second?
I was gonna say, did you get it?
Do I get a, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Schmidt, own discussion, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries.
Take me just a moment, so I can.